Good evening and welcome to the May 2023 Planning Board Meeting. My name is Kirsten Harris and I'll be chairing this evening. And we do have a quorum with Erin Carney and Michelle Gebler and Benjamin Nilson. And Benji is here with us tonight. We have a few items on the agenda that have requested adjournment, so I'll just run through what we will be looking at tonight. The first item is 46 Hudson Street, a proposed three-family residence with a continued public hearing. Then we have 135 Beekman Avenue, a proposed multifamily building architectural review approval presentation. Then we have 305 North Washington Street, proposed three-family residence site plan and architectural review approval presentation. Then we have, item number four is requested adjournment. Number five is Edge on Hudson Riverfront Development Block O P N N Townhomes Phase Two Architectural Review Approval Presentation. Item six has requested adjournment. And then seven is going to be 1 Kelborn Avenue, proposed addition and alterations, site plan and architectural review approval preliminary presentation. And then the last item will be approval of minutes from April 2023. So with that, we'll open up, can I have a motion to continue our public hearing for 46 Hudson Street?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the public hearing's open, welcome back.
Hi, thank you. Hi, members of the board, I am Chair. So as you know, we're representing the public hearing for 46 Hudson Street. We've presented many times through many iterations. There have been many suggestions by the board, both the planning board and the zoning board, that we've taken in, we've adjusted the design, which kind of leaves us where we're at today. I mean, there hasn't been any change since last time, so I will take any questions that you have or comments about the draft resolution that we're prepared to hear today.
Okay. Benji, did you want to ask the questions?
Is it an asphalt shingle roof?
It is an asphalt shingle roof.
And the gutters on the garage side or the north and south side?
Sorry.
Downsides?
There will be, yes, there will be downsides, yeah.
Is that any, any, any suggestions?
Benji, can you talk into the microphone?
Yeah, no, no, it's okay. I mean, we haven't selected a material for the downspouts, but they're either going to be K-style gutters or six inch downs.
And they'll be along the north and south elevations?
They will be along the north and south elevations, yeah.
Your utilities locations, the gas meters, do you have gas meters or will they just electric?
So we're not using gas, it's all electric, yeah.
Brian, the decks, are they solid? So you have gutters running?
So, yeah, so the decks are going to be solid, we're going to run, you know, a gutter within the deck.
Within the deck or face mounted?
No, I mean, I think we'll do probably what, you know, we'll catch the water as it runs down, there's going to be barrels within the, you know, within the deck and it's going to direct water back, yeah.
And the base of the building is exposed concrete?
The base, so the base of the building, whatever is exposed will be stuck good?
Stuck good.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's going to be hardy board all the way down, yeah.
Right, just short of the, just off the grade?
Yep, just off the grade, yeah, the minimum, you know, minimum dimension, I think it's one foot six or something, yeah.
And then where the ground floor, I guess, that kind of goes down a few steps, would that line of the siding, datum of it continue the same or would it go down further?
The, I mean, this, so the relationship between grade and how low the hardy board comes down is going to be maintained, yeah, so it'll jog.
For that, the upper gable porch thing, is it, it's an open triangle or there's like space inside that's not actually accessible?
It is, it's an open triangle, yeah.
You'll do gutter or some sort of roof drain up there?
Sorry, where are you talking about?
That porch, that's over there.
Oh, the porch here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, we're gonna, we'll have to drain that somehow, I don't know exactly what the detail's going to be.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Any public comments?
My name is Clara Teagle, 38 Hudson Street. The issue that I have in the opposition to this proposal is that the setback on the north side is three feet. And originally it was two feet, seven inches, they increased it to three feet, but the zoning code states five foot minimum. So I mean, that is a significant difference, that's a two-foot difference. And I did make this note to the zoning board of appeals and apparently nothing was taken into consideration making their determination to approve this project. Now, originally, the width between 48 and 46 would have been approximately 10 feet because the driveway was there. Now, they said that, zoning board said that they could build or move the driveway to whichever side they want. So, you know, fine, all well and good, except that the distance now between that building is three feet, not the five-foot zoning code. So I mean, it's five-foot zoning code minimum. So apparently you're not even, you're going against your own zoning code. Five foot minimum to me means five foot minimum, not three feet. I mean, a three-foot makes a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is William White, I'm at 48 Hudson Street. And we received, I assume they received my letter of the 15th.
Yes, we did.
Issues that it addressed, I'm not going to address that tonight, I want to just bring up, approach it on a more humane, humanity basis. My entire life I have lived at 48 Hudson Street. And in that time, I have had sunlight, ventilation, and privacy on all four sides of the house. Now, I don't know how many on the board live in the manner or Webber Park or Harry's such as that. But suppose your neighbor sold their house to a developer and that developer decides to tear down that house and put up a new house 30 inches from your house. 30 inches, by horn, 30 inches. How would you feel? Now, the zoning board says it's okay because they're going to put windows on that side. It's aesthetically, it has an aesthetic value, it adds an aesthetic value to that house. I have a fine arts degree. I cannot see how putting windows on the side of a house that you cannot see adds aesthetic value to it. The zoning board said that there is not substantial, there's not a substantial change to the street itself by allowing these modifications. And I don't know what street they're looking at, but this is not Clinton Street, this is Hudson Street, single-family homes. That particular unit, if constructed, would dwarf the single-family homes on both sides of it in size comparison. Now, I mentioned that I was not going to talk about what I said in my May 15 letter, but it's important to know that my neighbor at 50 Hudson Street was so concerned about her property because she's in the process of selling her property to this developer. She was concerned that she wants to make sure easements are created to keep distance between our properties. Not only was she concerned, she was upset because the property at 54 Hudson Street, which is on the north side of her property, which was built, I think, no more than three or four years ago, has settled and created damage to her house. Her walls and her flooring are warping because of shifting of the soil. Three feet on my side, what's going to happen in two or three years? Are we going to be in court talking about it? Now, at this point, I'm just going to conclude by saying this, you know, in my travels within a village and talking to people and then becoming aware of my dilemma after I tell them, their response to me is not verbal, but their response is like, now what does that mean? We have the developer who's coming into, coming on our street that has no history on the street and building, buying property and building it and forgetting about the neighbors, all for a buck. And I know you guys did not take your positions on this board to create millionaires. You took those positions to make sure people like us, citizens who have been in this village for years, and my particular family has been here for more than 120 years in that one You have those positions to protect us against this type of incursion. And I ask you to send this back, this resolution back to the zoning board for modifications. Five foot, what can I say, it's there. We have 10 foot, but five foot is there. Honor that five foot, not because of aesthetics, but because it's the law that you created. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments at this time? Hearing none, I move to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
We do have a resolution before us, I'm going to ask Steve to read us the conditions.
Madam Chair, the board has a resolution before it, it was reviewed by staff, there are some, several minor editorial comments that had been provided, we have included the receipt of the correspondence, the most recent correspondence submitted by Ms. Teagle dated May 18. And I will now just read the resolved clauses, now therefore be it resolved that the foregoing whereas clauses are incorporated herein by reference and are fully adopted as part of this approval, be it further resolved with the planning board after review of the materials submitted, public comments, and recommendations. And the EAF has determined that the proposed action is a Type II action and has been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment or is otherwise precluded from environment review under Article 8 of the Environment and Conservation Law, be it further resolved that the planning board has reviewed the plans and specimen building materials, uniformity, dissimilarity, inappropriateness, and quality of design, and approves the architectural design of the proposed project, and be it further resolved that the application for site plan approval relative to the destruction of a three-family home and other related improvements is shown on the architectural plans dated February 1, 2023, and the engineering site plan dated last revised January 19, 2023. And as may be subsequently revised, is hereby granted approval and the applicant may obtain the endorsed approval of the planning board chair on a copy of this resolution and upon the site plan drawings as and when revised, it's necessary to show compliance with the following conditions, which endorsement shall permit the filing in the Sleepy Hollow Department of Architecture, Land Development, Buildings and Building Compliance of the Building Department. For the purposes of obtaining a building permit in accordance with this resolution and all building code requirements, provided however that this approval shall expire one year after the date of this resolution if the following modifications and conditions have not been completed to the satisfaction of the planning board and the Village Building Department and the applicant has not obtained the required building permit or permits for construction in accordance with the approved plans. One, the applicant shall pay the Village of Sleepy Hollow all application review fees as required by the Village Code prior to the building permit being issued. Two, the applicant shall submit the final stone order management calculations to the village engineer for review and approval. Three, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and as-built survey shall be provided to the Village Building Department. Three, let me start over again, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and as-built survey shall be provided to the Village Building Department, and any material change to the site plan from that approved by the planning board will require the applicant to present the revised plan to the planning board for a site plan amendment. Four, the applicant will designate one off-street parking space to each of the three dwelling units at no additional cost to the tenant. Five, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the applicant shall pay the required recreation fund fee in accordance with Chapter 200-5 of the Village Code. And six, prior to the signing of the resolution, the applicant shall submit a full set of engineering and architectural plans to the Building Department. And I'm sure that is the resolution that's currently before you as amended.
I think just to comment on the last point, it's been a while since we had a full set and we had some additions and modifications along the way, so looking for you to submit a fully, as I say, compiled, up-to-date set for that final, to be signed with the resolution.
Of course.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question, just for the record. What's before the planning board is a site plan and architectural review approval, is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. So, we've heard some strong public comments tonight related to variances, in terms of setback variances. That is not being discussed tonight in terms of, that's not in the purview of this board, is that correct?
That's correct, it's not within this board's purview, nor is it to send anything back to the zoning board, they've already opined and adopted the resolution.
And there's a process through the zoning appeal board to field such comments and to consider them, is that correct?
Yeah, we have public hearings as well.
Okay, and once, once the decision has been made, in terms of the setback issues and things, the property owner then has the right to develop the site plan in accordance with that determination, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this board doesn't have the authority to waive or waiver them or change those particular setback issues.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, the variances that were granted from the zoning board of appeals, was that side yard setback to be three feet, correct?
Yes.
And parking?
And the parking.
What?
What about parking?
They got a parking variance as well, correct? Those are the two, just to clarify here for the record.
Yeah, I think we had five or six variances that were approved. Front yard, side yard, parking.
So that those now become attached to that property as allowed to be, I don't know how to say, they oversee, override the requirements that would be normally, how to say?
Yes, they permit construction to go within those required variances, so they supersede now.
Supersede is the word I was looking for, thank you.
The R5 requirements in that district.
Just to clarify, and then thank you, Ben, to clarify that that's a process that occurred before the zoning board of appeals, is not before us tonight, just for those that might be listening and to clarify that, I think that's important. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution before us? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for all of the time, thank you to the public for coming out. Is there any other comments from the consultants or staff related to this? Okay, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Next is 135 Beekman Avenue.
My name is Christopher Barbagley from Vassalotti Architects, and I'm representing Frank Alessi for the property at 135 Beekman. Since our last meeting, as requested, we updated our renderings so that they're coordinated with colors, with sizes, with views. All the mechanical equipment was shown, we updated our landscaping plans as requested, those are all coordinated with the site plan, the plans, site plans, elevations. We updated our site lighting plan, the photometrics to reflect the sconces, the wall lights that are on the building. Then other than that, coordinated the roof plan to include all the mechanical equipment, we had some railings, and that was pretty much what we updated since.
Do you want to just go, do you have the full set there that you can just kind of go through in case anyone is not seeing?
Okay, on the...
Was that the lighting, actually? Maybe we can talk about that right now?
Sure.
You want to comment?
Yeah, thanks for updating it with the wall sconces, and now we have the kind of full picture of what's being proposed. We noticed when looking at it, the lighting levels were, I think the driveway looks great, you've got plenty of light there. When you get to the back where the angled parking is and the aisle across from the perp nuclear parking, light was really low in there. And we'd like to see at least a half a foot candle, that's what the requirement is. Was there any thought given to current ambient light when you created this photometric?
Yeah, I mean, these are all rear yards back here, you know, they're all rear yards. I mean, it was considered, yes.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is...
We could add.
If there is a way to increase the light should that be helpful.
Is this something that could be updated in the approval process? Or is this something that, because, you know, we've added the, you know, we had these, the tall lights here, and we added 15 more of these, and you're okay with that, I mean, if we're just going to be adding a couple more, is it something that has to...
Yeah, my opinion is that the focus would just be on that central aisle area, I don't see it really going beyond that, so I mean, I would be comfortable with that, but that's...
I think specifically, we are talking about including the ambient lighting that's coming off of Beekman Avenue in your calculations.
In the analysis, yeah.
So that's what we're looking for, because that may be enough to...
To make up...
Yeah, exactly.
Your concern is in this area?
No, between the perpendicular parking and the angled parking, you've got a lot of zeros, point ones, and sub-point-five levels there. And there may be a way, once you incorporate the ambient light, that maybe those levels come up, and maybe that's not such an issue. Or maybe there's another lighting solution that needs to be considered for that spot.
Okay, we'll look into the ambient lighting.
So, James, just to clarify, if the current existing ambient light conditions are tested and then added to the proposed, it may be sufficient, but without that number right now, we don't know.
Correct.
I mean, we're definitely sensitive, I know we even, it's been a long conversation related to lighting, and we've been sensitive to not wanting to be light polluting more than necessary and sensitive to the neighbors.
Yeah.
So we're not looking for you to oversize the lighting, but we're just trying to find the happy medium, making sure you're meeting code, lighting requirement wise, and hence our suggestion would be to take into consideration that ambient lane that might already exist, and then maybe you're fine, you don't need to add any, but should you need to, then just...
At the roof level. We showed a fancy around here, we added some planters, you know, that was what we did up at the roof level. Mechanical equipment is generally the same as it was, the railings are the same, minimal changes up here.
And were you screening off the mechanicals on the roof?
This area.
Were you screening off the mechanicals on the roof?
Did you say where?
Screening, as they're screening off.
Yes, yes, this is the screen around this equator.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay, that's my fault.
How high is the screen?
I believe it was four feet, something like that, no? Five feet.
Let me get a show of one of the typical floor plans.
I think we, we noticed that the egress stairs are actually not co-compliant.
How so?
The distance apart.
The distance apart is too small, is that what you're saying?
It's, if those shift, and it's one-third of the full building diagonal. I was just curious if those shift, how that adjusts your plan.
How would it adjust it? I'm Jim Vassalotti of Vassalotti Architects.
You're saying if we shift one of these stairs down?
I'm just asking, when it becomes co-compliant, does that affect where the elevator or the stairs are in plan? I mean, obviously...
No, I mean, I mean, we would have to check the dimensions of the space in between the stairs.
No, I'm just saying, the question is, you're looking for the one-third of the distance, diagonal distance, I would look into that.
The only reason I ask is because it might affect where the elevator and stairs are. So, and that's a, it's a very prominent feature on the building.
Yeah, well, you're not going to touch the elevator, that's for sure. But I guess one of the things that irks me a little bit is that we've been here over two years and now all of a sudden it's first discovered that this is not right. I don't understand why this didn't happen two years ago or six months, eight months ago. This has been going on way too long. But we'll address it and see what we have to do if that's the case, indeed.
Hold on a second, hold on.
Yes, sure.
You're the architect.
That's correct.
This is the planning board, that's not their responsibility, it's just happened to be...
Okay, but it came up at the planning board.
Right.
So it's a building department question.
No, it's your question. You have to provide a co-compliant plan.
Yeah, I understand that. So, but it's not the planning board who's reviewing this, correct?
No, but the cost was made for you to check it out because...
Yes, we will.
If you have to move the stair or the elevator, you're back to this board.
It'll affect the...
Yeah, okay. All right, let's be clear.
Okay. Go ahead.
Any other life safety question? Was there any other concern?
I think my questions were mainly about the architectural kind of expression or the detailing. Not sure if anybody else was aware.
I think you go for it. Maybe go to an elevation, because you're correct, what you want to comment on is going to be more visible or the three-dimensional.
So, I'm just curious, you know, you guys, you have a building that's a lot larger than the residential buildings, the, the single-family homes that are adjacent. You're kind of treating it with the same architectural detailing. Just curious if there was a way to kind of make it a little bit more...
No. Excuse me, Joe, we're not changing the plans.
Did you not hear what I asked?
Excuse me?
Did you not hear what I asked? I didn't even finish my question.
Okay, go ahead, please go ahead.
Can I even ask a question?
You certainly can. Go right ahead.
It's very strange.
Well, this is how it is. I'm frustrated, I've been here two and a half years, you know, and we're still talking about the elevations.
The math thing of the proposed home is, is not that much greater than what's existed. You know, we have the, the elevations and it's, it's not that much greater.
Correct, the building is actually two feet shorter than the building that's there.
I'm sorry?
The roof height is two feet shorter than what's...
I think the building that's there was like forty-three, forty-four, went forty-two, forty-one something.
Okay. Because I was just asking, it seems like you're treating it like it's residential detailing, like the adjacent buildings.
Well, that was what was, that was what we were encouraged to do. We didn't just come up with this. We were encouraged to blend with the city, with the streetscape, and that was our goal.
Okay.
I think it's, I mean, it's just the history of this project and we have been in discussions for quite a while and there was even an overlay zone code that came along in the meantime. And so it is true that there was effort made to make it similar to the buildings that are around it, as much as it can be, considering that it is such a very large building. So, some of the history, not to discount the question at all, just to, just to put it in the context.
I guess it's the proportions are this, almost the same with the smaller buildings, that's all I'm saying. If it could just maybe be a little bit, you know, maybe some of the details are too small, that's all I'm saying, except for kind of smaller buildings, that's all I'm saying. The, the railings and the little shutters, it's all kind of like, some things, the trim and all just seems kind of for a two, two and a half story building and this is just the...
I mean, aren't we trying to blend in the neighborhood?
I mean, same material, it's just, you know, ten-story building and you're doing the same detailing.
But this is, let me just jump in again, I'm sorry. This has been going on for years. We went through this, we met with everyone. Yeah. Can I introduce myself? Sure. How you doing? I'm Sal Alessi with the development team.
Okay.
I see that you're kind of new, I guess. You just, I haven't seen you in a while. Every single thing you're touching on right now was touched on already and was changed multiple, multiple times. And, and we're, I think we're at a point where everyone was in agreeance with everything there. So, we're back commenting on things that we changed already multiple, multiple times.
I'm just asking questions here.
What I'm saying is you're going back to a design question that this was, this, you know, it's invasive because we went through this already, so it's invasive.
Are you, you're implying that we're invasive?
No, no, your question, your questions could possibly be invasive because we've gone through this already.
Okay.
Everyone else has been here, I'm sure they can vouch for that, that we've discussed windows, we discussed railings, they've, they've already said, can you make the railings bigger? Yes, we did. Can you make the columns bigger? Yes, we did. Can you do this? We did it. Everybody was, now all of a sudden, this is like back on, on the boards again. I didn't hear no questions about the last project, that was like easy. This one, we're commenting about the size of the columns.
It's a much bigger building and it's on Beekman.
Okay, but we went through this already and they liked where we're at.
I thought you were the calm one.
No, I'm not. That's why I had to get up. They're too calm for me.
Listen, I apologize for everyone, but I think that basically at this point, this board has no intention of approving this building, so we...
Let's put our money into zoning now.
That's, that's it.
That's it. But the money is to show, and showing the...
We've been abused for two and a half years.
No, it's a fair question.
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Joe. Finish up with the questions, all right? If you can answer any of the questions, let's move forward here, all right?
Please don't feel like we're going backwards.
We're getting attacked, I'm sorry.
It's not an attack at all.
Don't take it as an attack.
It wasn't intended as that.
That's what this is about. Let's answer the questions and move on. Good. What is, what is the question?
I already asked it.
No, we can't change it because we already did.
We're not, we're not changing, we're not going to resubmit. You could have voted on it the way it is, you could refuse to vote on it, it's in your court and depending on what this, what decides on, that would be unexpected action. Why don't you go through the rest of the changes that you made? We, we made all the changes. I mean, I don't know how many more changes we can make. Show two drawings. Go through your presentation and let's see, hopefully that answers any other open others, okay? What other, what other question was there? What other items open?
Just the landscape.
Right, the lighting, we had pole lighting, you wanted them out, we wanted to give you a pole.
We were just covering, yeah.
We have, this is a good shot here, no one's ever seen this. Why don't you show us? Show us that roof drawing here. That seems like a nice amenity, don't you want to promote that? So, one of the things we added was a rendering of the, at the roof, the user experience at the roof. The views of down the river, landscape, we updated the landscaping and the elevations, some smaller shrubs, I think that's someone I'd asked for. We updated, show the bulkheads on stair bulkhead, the elevator bulkhead. And then on the... We completely redesigned our landscaping, all native plants. This is the rear yard, the common area. This is looking down the driveway and some night shots. That's all the landscaping.
I appreciate the additional renderings that are part of this presentation and also trying to get all of the various views and drawings aligned and consistent as we requested. And I, I hear you, you're right. It's been a long process, not just for you, for us here, those of us that have been here for the whole duration of it. And our newest member just had questions because he is new and I think it served to just allow him that chance to ask those questions and that it was not intended to be an attack or intended to delay things. I think it resonates with feelings that are out there still in the community. So, it is a big project and a prominent spot in our community and so what you do is going to be seen by many and is going to have impact in our downtown. So, it's not taken lightly, as you know, we've been here a long time talking about it. And I think it, it's evolved a lot, mostly for the better. And I guess, is there any other comments from other members or questions at this time?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to just say that I, I do think some of the, some of the care for some of the outdoor space, I, I think is a big improvement to the project. I, I do think, this is a, I mean, this, this downtown core is a great place at the outside and I think you guys have done, elevated the game for sure on these latest plans, so that's, that's much appreciated. I, I do, I do like the landscape plan as well. I know it's maybe obviously ancillary to the big, the big part, but, but again, I think they got some good grounds and good space for, for your future residents.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I'd just like to add, you know, thank you for working with our board. It has been a long process and, yes, thank you. One comment on the rooftop amenity, it, it, it is very windy at times on, in this location and with the rooftop amenity, just, I noticed that there, you don't have any shade, so just please consider wind when, when those spaces are furnished and any sort of shading is, is added.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to look at the, the egress question brought up and I think for me personally, and I apologize if that didn't come up sooner, but I, I do think it's on you as the architect to make sure your building's co-compliant and the concern I would have is if it's going to shift your elevations, we might be seeing you again. So, that's why, just know, if it has impacts ultimately on that envelope or the aesthetics we're seeing, that's why we just wanted to bring it to your attention sooner than later. Or, I know it feels late, but it's anyway, better now than later now, even later. I, at this time, would request that Dave to draft a resolution for approval for, to look at next time.
For the May twenty-second?
June.
June twenty-second.
Yeah, correct, June twenty-second.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is 305 North Washington.
My name is, for the record, my name is Greg Cattrapoli, engineer on the project at 305 North Washington Avenue. Since last meeting, I did have a, a meeting with staff to go over some of the items that, that still needed to be addressed and did so on this revision and I'll brief you, briefly take you through some of them. So, you know, I'm going to move this over a little bit because I can't really see. So, the parking lot area, we now created a...
Excuse me, can you just zoom in even more?
Sure.
Thank you, so we can see them.
Sorry.
Thanks.
So, in the proposed parking lot area, we now have a three-foot-wide strip going around the perimeter for proposed plantings and some landscaping. We did shift the building more toward North Washington Street and created two compact car spots, spaces one and two, to allow for sufficient backup and, you know, create the green space that everybody wanted to see for the property. Other than that, there were some adjustments, like replacing the concrete sidewalk along North Washington and Howard, which we are now proposing. The, the crosswalk is now proposed. We did eliminate two parking spots on Howard Street as a result of the proposed curb cut. Three are remaining, the orientation is the only thing that had changed on that end. And we do have some egress window wells in the rear and we dropped down the sides of the patios to create that separation from the rear property line. And in regards to the site plan, I believe that's, those are the major changes. Engineering-wise, we did have some engineering comments, which I addressed the first round and did receive a few, what I consider minor comments that I can absolutely address prior to the next time seeing you guys, so Mr. Natarelli could probably fill you in on that. And let me bring you to the landscape plan now. The landscape plan stayed very similar to the previous one that you saw, except there's additional plantings now since I created the planting areas surrounding the parking lot, so now we added a couple of shrubs up along the building and some plantings on, on this side of the property as well. And that's pretty much the, the bulk of it.
Can you go through the, the floor plans and then the elevations as well?
Sure. So, here's a front elevation of the building. Aesthetically, not much has changed, other than the fact that we removed, I believe on, on the rear, there were dormers, but we removed them in this, for this presentation and we changed the style of the roofs in the roof. And we changed the style of the roofs in the rear to be shed roof style instead of, I believe they were gable previously. And as far as floor plan...
Can you just go back to the elevation for a second and point out which one is the one facing North Washington?
Sure. So, this side is facing North Washington Street and this side is facing the parking lot. Do you see my cursor?
Yeah, just barely, but yes.
Okay, so this side is facing the parking lot and this side is facing...
And then can you actually go to the elevation that's facing North Washington?
This one? Or the one that's facing North Washington is right here?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. So, this is the one that's, that you're looking at on North Washington Street, correct? There are lands, there is proposed landscaping as well, so probably to the top of this window is gonna be screened pretty, pretty well. We also are proposing some AC units in here, which will be screened. That, that was a cha, that was definitely one of the challenges with the site plan is trying to make, find places for the utilities while...
Yeah, can you talk about where those utilities are planned to be located?
Sure. So, on this plan sheet, I'll show you where we have water and sewer, domestic water and sewer coming in on this front face of the building and fire service, water service coming in off North Washington, which may be revised based on town engineer's comments. I have to just take a look into that. And we have the proposed AC units over here and potential location for gas meters. Although the multifamily dwelling, we plan on using all-electric.
So, you might not have gas meters.
Right. But it's, it's, it's the layout's there.
Can I inquire as to why you would put those utilities on this, like the AC? You said the condensing units are there. Is that correct?
Correct. The condensing units are here, yes.
Why you wouldn't put them on the parking lot side instead?
Because of cars backing up into them and that was really the main concern and then we have...
Or on the rear of the house. I just feel like, I know you're, you've kind of shifted the orientation from being the front yard on North Washington to the front yard on Howard, but I feel like it's a corner lot and you need to be mindful of both those elevations because ultimately they are both very visible.
Right.
And so, I would put any of that kind of utilities that are not attractive to look at, quite frankly, less visible. And I was even wondering if you'd had ever considered having that end unit facing North Washington.
Having the, this end unit?
Yeah.
Facing North Washington?
Correct.
I guess when we go to the floor plans, you could clarify that?
Yeah.
So, but back to your comment regarding the AC condensers. It's hard to find seven feet, you know, by three-foot space on this site to really, to put them that is in a safe spot. So, I mean, now that I'm looking like maybe perpendicular to the dwelling here, but all of our mechanicals are in the front of the, as you'll see on the floor plan, so... And it would be hard to mirror that floor plan because of the need for egress and we're not gonna have the egress at the, at the front of the building, but...
Do you want to keep all three together?
That is very true, absolutely. So, I will address that on the next iteration, the location of the AC units. I understand it bothers you. So, back to the floor plan.
I mean, my, my question or inquiry is based also looking at the elevations and just thinking about that corner lot condition and if there a design solution that could acknowledge that. And so, I was first thinking, how can you improve the side elevation that's facing North Washington? But then I thought, oh, maybe if, I know you sort of have this townhome approach, so they're stacked, you know, all in the same orientation. But if the end one were to enter from the side and not, you know, from Washington and not Howard, would that give you opportunities on the facade to, to articulate it differently to, to have more of a front on Washington also?
So, what, what is exactly the concern with the facade on, sorry, on this elevation?
It has improved from my recollection of where it was at. So, not to, it was just, clearly the answer is no, you haven't looked at it.
I think that was the attempt, honestly, with the, with the jog here and the, the gable detail.
Right.
I think that's what the attempt was. So, and, and this portion of the building, well, now the AC units, I'm gonna find a different locations for them.
Right.
And also without the landscaping shown, you're kind of not, you're not really getting a feel for...
Yes, having...
That tree, but...
Renderings with landscaping will help, probably.
Right, they're just extremely expensive.
Benji, did you jump in?
No, just go back. Can you go to that first floor plan?
Sure.
And the land, look at the landscape plan, is only moving one parking lot, parking spot?
Yeah, it looks like he accidentally left one of them on there, yeah, on, on his iteration. But, right, so that definitely needs to be deleted from his plan. I did notice that when I was looking at it as well. Well, what is your question in regards to the first?
Just, just to go see, because she was asking, hold up.
Well, I think another comment was to mirror this unit here to get some windows on that side. We did do that.
Yep.
We gave you the basement layout. We extended the porch slightly, I think about three to four feet. We are asking for some, some pretty significant, significant variances already, so it's tough to encroach more. But that's where we stand.
Do you want to go to that basement plan?
Sure. That's right here. So, playroom in the rear with the egress windows. Utilities are planned to be under the staircases and so I have the water line coming in off of North Washington at this corner because I planned on putting the backflow system here. Same thing with domestic. And then it would extend to each unit from there. We do show where the hot water, the tankless hot water heater would be. Bathroom, tub in each unit and they're, they're very similar.
Yeah, why the two doors into the beach bathroom?
Excuse me?
This is just a question of curiosity. Why two doors into each bathroom?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess, it's a good question.
Yeah, I feel like you only need one and the other one's not helping you.
Right. That's something noted.
I think your other concern is the egress out of here, especially if it ends up being used for sleeping. I know you've labeled it as a playroom, but for all intents and purposes, it could become a, a sleeping area. And so, the second means of egress out of there, are you accommodating that in the window well that you're showing to the north?
I'm not really sure what, what you're trying to ask me. So, you're saying that this could become sleeping quarters? Is, is that what you said?
Correct.
And we have egress windows on the rear?
Yep, that was my question. And have, have you looked at, do they work in section to get out?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. This is a, I think it's a unit by Bowman Kemp. But yes, it's, it's usable for egress, correct.
And then your well, you have a ladder coming down or something like that?
Yes, exactly. I think you need three feet off the face of the house and I sized the wells according to the code requirements. So, on, on plan, on my site plan, you see that they're significantly larger than the previous plans that you've seen.
This is true.
Right.
So, how many, how many bedrooms are these?
So, we have four, sorry. One two-bedroom in each of them, so it's total of six bedrooms. So, two bedrooms in each.
And is that, so the parking requirement for that is?
Uh, the six. So, we're not asking for any parking variances.
And you feel confident the parking now works? I know you shifted to your compact spots. It feels like, is it...
I think it works, yeah.
Confidentistic?
From a functionality standpoint, I think that it could be a little bit better, but I think it makes everything, I think it brings the aesthetics in and it's still functional, you know?
Can we go to the site plan that just shows the variances that you're looking for?
Sure. Here it is. So, um... So, just to refresh everybody's memory, what we did was we went up and down North Washington Street and measured the distance from the curb to each home. And then we did the same on Howard. And on Washington, we came up with an average setback of 23.5 feet. On Howard, we came up with an average setback of 13.5 feet from the curb. So, these are from curb dimensions, not from property line. And I was, I was using that as my guide initially to place the home or see kind of where we stand in relationship to the rest of the, the street. But our variances will, the requirement on this side is 20 feet and we're at six and a half. So, it is a 13 and a half foot variance on North Washington. And on Howard Street, we have a setback proposed, a minimum setback of 7.6 feet proposed when the requirement is 10 feet. So, we have a two, 2.4 foot variance on that end that we're gonna be seeking.
And where your building is located compared to the averages of the neighboring buildings, is it exceed that or within that?
We're within four feet, three to four feet of the averages.
Is that average, the 23 and a half, is that to the front porch or to a building facade?
It's to a front porch. So, when I was, when we were measuring, it was measured, if there was a porch on the house, then it was measured to the porch. It wasn't measured to the, to the structure.
That's kind of the difference.
Because the, because you're supposed to take your setback dimension from the foundation of the porch. So, that's why I did it like that.
But the, the Washington, North Washington, the 23 and a half, that's for a porch and you're... And then the building is actually probably around closer, the typical is probably around more close to that, the, the setback, the, the normal setback. So, you're pretty, you're a much farther on a full, whole facade. I mean, it's two and a half stories. You're, you're...
Right. The, the, I guess the more optimistic side of that would be that it is a dead end and not many, not much traffic in here, I guess, unless the people that live in the few homes that are here. But I, I do hear your point, though, I'm glad.
So, so one other question back to this, this whole basement room situation. I, I guess Sean, from like a code perspective, I mean, what's the difference between a playroom and a bedroom?
Well, the name? It really depends on how you use it, right? And if the, and if the space is designed where you could use it for sleeping purposes, we're gonna call it a bedroom.
So, would, would that then, would that affect their parking calculation, correct?
Is that a closet in the playroom? Is that?
Yeah, to store the toys, yeah.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a room big enough to meet...
Removing the closet isn't a problem. If you want us, if you want us to remove the closet, that shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I was just, I mean, yeah, just kind of curious. Because I mean, just when we're talking like the zoning stuff, I just want to make sure that, you know, you're kind of crossing Ts and dotting Is on that.
Right.
Because, because obviously that's, that could, I mean, that would, depending on the interpretation, I guess, could change your parking variance request, right? Or whatever.
Yes.
So, I, yeah, I just, I was kind of curious on what...
Yeah, you have a closet in there, you have a doorway separate to the bathroom in the hallway. I mean, and an opening that you can just hack a door on.
Right, so...
We would prefer that you just call it and design it and propose it for what you really want to use it for. And then if in fact it require it triggers another piece of that variance, I would suggest going for it or it ends up being used for what you want to use it for and then it's a enforcement issue for us later. So, you'd rather have it just do what you want.
So, when we, when we submit to the ZVA, when it gets there, we will make sure that we make that clear and address it the way we want.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yeah, I just think it's just the, yeah, for our conversation, yeah, it just affects site plan, so.
Right, in terms of the planning, that's a great point, yes.
And we don't want to be in a position that, you know, you get a certificate of occupancy for one thing and then a homeowner can clearly use it as a sleeping, right? We don't want to restrict them in that way.
Understood. But that's something that I can speak to the, to the owner about and make those changes prior to presenting to the ZVA to make sure that I'm not asking for another variance for parking. Or maybe I am, but I'd have to speak to the owner about it.
So, really depending on the design layout, if it's clearly an open space, you'd call a rec...
Right. Understood, okay.
Yeah, just on, on the parking side of things, I mean, you know, one of... I know right now you're showing six spots, two, two compact ones. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of impervious surface on the site. And I mean, that, that, that parking spot number one, I mean, I don't know how you... Have you looked at the turning, can you even back out of that and move?
You'd have to back straight out and, and then turn it and then you'd probably come to a point at the back of three where you'd have to back up again and then get out. But it could work. It's just not a standard...
Sure.
Turn the wheel twice, turn.
Sure. Yeah, just, you know, in terms of, in terms of variances or whatever, I, I mean, you know, that, you know, if that spot went away, it, it wouldn't really probably effectually change the actual parking impact in the community, if that makes sense. If, if there's, you know, some reason in the site plan, be it, you know, more tree cover of the parking area, which of course, you know, from kind of the urban heating perspective, I mean, we want to see as much coverage on impervious stuff as we can. I don't know, something to consider, I mean, I...
Understood.
But it's, but it kind of dovetails into that whole, you know, basement conversation as well.
I mean, I think, I, I see an intent to minimize the variances you're requesting, but I think the existing conditions and the context in which you are, it could warrant that to make a good site plan, you might need to ask for more variances.
Right.
Just to say like parking wise, like, you know, you might not be able to fit all the parking that the code requires. You might need that variance and it might actually be a better site plan ultimately, so...
Well, with your support, that, that would help.
Yeah, I think we're saying we're supportive of, of that.
Yeah, just think from a, from a like existing conditions to what you have now, you have no onsite parking for, had like six, six units or whatever. I mean, you're, so, you know, I think...
We did get rid of two on the street, but we're, we're adding five if I were to get rid of one, so it's a net gain.
So, so it's like, you know, it's just the classic balance of things, you know, where I think...
If you didn't have to do so many parking spots, you might not have to get rid of the two on the street as well. You might be a little...
Well, I think that was more of the curb cut issue and site distance and the proximity of this spot to the next driveway over. There just wasn't enough room for it. But, because I did look into this heavily to try and... But, um, because I did look into this heavily to try and preserve the spot. And I think, I even had a conversation with staff about it. And I came to the conclusion that I was just gonna get rid of it based on that conversation.
It's your compact car spot.
Yes. Right.
Greg, what's the gap between the, this, no, spot number six and the curb just below it? Uh, two feet. And is that, is that just pavement? Is there a reason that that's offset from the curb?
No, it's just pavement there. I think we had a drain inlet here. And that could absolutely be shifted over.
I'm just wondering if we shift it down, would spot number one have more space to turn around? Or maybe we could figure that back?
Oh, hundreds, right, right.
More space?
Yeah, that's something that I'll look at prior to submitting to the ZBA and in conjunction with the playroom, I think, situation. I think either way, spot one is, is in a tight situation. But I'll run it through the vehicle tracking and see how it...
It might be helpful for the board to see that vehicle tracking, if you could print that out and move this issue.
Sure.
Are the back patios, um, separate from each other with some kind of fencing? Or is it all open one to the other?
I think that's, that's addressed on the landscape line. So they have plantings in between, there's privacy fence, a small, uh, you know, six-foot length privacy fence. And then there's a tree on the back end and then a small shrub on the...
So they could walk around that privacy fence to egress if needed?
Right, I mean, yeah, because there's a, this is just a, an actual tree, so there's a trunk to it. It's not, it hasn't had the rain or brush. Right. And, uh, so is there any more questions from the board members?
What, just one other thought, I, I do think this whole AC unit thing on, on North Washington, I, I do think, not to go back to that, but it, it seems like shifting parking down a little bit might give you a little bit more room where your trash enclosure is there that, I mean, it seems like a lot more logical place for some of those, uh, some of those utilities.
Right, I mean, maybe on this side, but I'm worried about putting them anywhere around here.
Yeah.
You know? Because of the overhang, so when your tire hits, you're, you already hit the AC unit.
For sure.
So definitely explore it, you know, somewhere in these areas.
Yeah, I think the back elevation or, or consider breaking them apart and not having it there.
Right, that's, that's what's gonna happen.
Now, I notice I see the landscaping in front of spot six.
Yes.
Just make sure the plans are coordinated, because I, I think there is a... David said, is there a, a code requirement for some sort of screening in front of parking spaces that are right on the, the right of way? I remember this came up in a, in a different application, but I can't remember the specifics of it. Is there something like that? So you may need to keep that, so just make sure that that's coordinated in the...
On this, that little strip that you already mentioned?
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't know if it's the same strip, I mean, I don't think it's paved in yours, but on there, it's landscaped, so...
No, because that's that three foot right here.
It's there, okay.
That's that three foot here. So I think we still can shift that.
The landscaping, I just showed spot six always against that, so I don't know. Double check that.
Right, and then this shows the three foot.
Right.
I understand the issue there.
I would also encourage the landscape designer to try and use the, um, the other side, the, the strip that's on the other side of the sidewalk for planting.
This strip?
The other side, the curb side.
I'm sorry, uh, this side or this side? Well...
You mean right next to where the cars are parking?
Yeah, just in the front, front area.
He proposes, uh, well, well blue flocks.
You're talking turf between the strip, well blue flocks, one gallon.
He is proposing some type of plantings with, uh, in-between sidewalk and fence on this side. This side is long.
Just as long.
Right. So, um, I guess our goal for this meeting was really to get referred to the ZBA and some, maybe some of these issues could be addressed prior to coming back before this board?
Yeah, I guess, um, I definitely am sensitive to the time that you need, I'd say, when we refer you, you kind of lose a month and it, you'll be before the ZBA in two months. So I don't want to delay that. I just wanted to also assure them that you're going before them, asking for, like, accurate variances. Like, you're not, you're asking for what you need. And if any of the things we've discussed tonight are gonna shift that ask, I guess, is it gonna be, you would be updating that for the actual application to the ZBA?
Right, so the, um, the only change is the parking. And, uh, understood. How do I know? Would you like to keep the closet in that room or not? Um, so the playroom, uh, in the basement has a closet.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome.
And a, and a, and an entrance, uh, the door, closet with the doorway that's, you know, that's pretty normal. So they're saying that this is prepared for sleeping. So if it's prepared, uh, like a bedroom, then they're gonna call it a bedroom. And if we're gonna call it a bedroom, that's okay, but we need to, uh, confirm what kind of variances will come with that in terms of parking.
The idea, what I was calling this was a storage room. Many people do not have a storage room, and this is a three-family house, independent. So I told them, the people who are gonna live there, we put the storage there, but we're supposed to put it outside. We have a problem around here, is people put the street in the street, not just garbage, the cans and everything else, but they had to keep it inside there to take it out when the garbage park, they have come. That's, we do in another area, the same situation. Can we go to, if you think it, we have a good building inspectors here, then can we go there and give me a big fine? Already happened. So what happened is, what happened is, we tried to keep, we can do half a storage, maybe half something else. But then I think the, the main idea is to keep up with the rules and regulations of the town. I own a property in, in Sleepy Island, and I never had any problem, because we all follow the rules. The problem is, when my neighbor was following the rules, and I told him, they called me, I'm a busybody or whatever, I don't have a choice to call the police. But over here, we, we're gonna have a problem, because we know we're gonna have parking inside. Before, with the building, we had, with, with six families, I believe, we parked on the street. Now we looking forward to parking inside. In the beginning, we was gonna, the original idea was to put the cars inside, but since, you know, the board thought it was better to put it outside.
Yeah.
Then they, we, we do whatever you guys decide to do. I think a storage would be good if we use half and, you know, what?
Is your current attic storage for the...
No, so basically what's gonna happen is, we're gonna get rid of the closets in these playrooms and call it storage or rec room. And so therefore, the parking would not change. The parking would stay the same, maybe a shift, but the count would remain the same. And our variances that, that you believe we are asking right now would remain the same.
So are, are those, are, are there tubs and showers in those bathrooms?
Uh, yes, these bathrooms down here, they have full baths.
Yeah, so that'd be like quite unusual for supporting a storage area.
You may be right, we can take the showers out.
But, I, I mean, I'm just, and again, I, I, the point of the board is, is that we just want to make sure that everything's squared out for you. I mean, if, if it's something you're wanting tenants to live down there, then, then, then just go for it, I guess.
I agree with the position, we can take the showers out and get out the toilet and something to clean. There were, many people use that as a playroom for the kids. We don't want them to take a shower there, they have showers upstairs. But I thought it was convenient, but we can take the showers out, and then there will still be a playroom.
I think that'd be great. Just right now, if you didn't have the word playroom written on there and I looked at that plan, I would think it's a bedroom. So that's what we're saying. If you make those modifications, you want to call it storage or a rec room or whatever, then I think that's much better.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah. And if you want it to be a bedroom, fine. That's also fine, you just, you know, call it that and then ask for the parking variance.
Thank you.
Understood.
Any other suggestions, we'd love to take it right now, because we've been here for three times only. So, and, and the situation is, we're going in the best time of the year, in the summertime. And then we, these things, I haven't started building any with, with West End modular, because the fact is, I don't want to do something that will be rejected, you know? And I have to be approved by you first, than anything else. And I've been around this town a long time, many years. Not what I get from Columbia, but in nineteen seventy-three, I started around here. So I remember the building, I remember, you remember, right? Many years ago, and I think it's, thank you very much for your help and whatever we can do here. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you feel comfortable to recommend to the zoning board? Or is there things we want to see changed before that happens?
I mean, the zoning board is about building envelope, location and parking. And so, I mean...
Do they need a variance for just the two compact spots? Or does it consider the, something that informs?
The compact is permitted, because of percentage. And I believe they're under that requirement, so that would not itself need a variance. However, if, if that space number one doesn't have a proper backup space, we won't count it as a legal space, and they would have to re-spend one.
And you count the one that's on the street as a compact spot that they're eliminating?
Um, it, it doesn't go into their variance request, but of course, once that driveway is actually located, you know, we're gonna look at that to see if we can make that, you know, a viable spot. Just from the village benefit standpoint.
I mean, I think from my perspective, I, I think I'm fine. But I think, I think there's definitely like a little, little bit of work to probably...
For the basement plan.
Give yourself some confidence with the, with the parking movements, um, to make sure that spot one in fact works. Otherwise, you will need a variance, I mean, if, if you need to go down to five.
Don't know now and ask for that variance.
You know what I mean, like, I think just making sure you're there. I think just making sure you're totally good with the number of bedrooms, um, and that you don't think the building envelope is gonna change, and then I think you're...
Right. Sean, you mentioned backup space. I believe it's, the code is twenty-two feet backup?
Yeah, and you know, because if you're calling that a compact, you might have some more space to make...
Right, but I'm saying as is, the way it's drawn, I'm not, I, I meet the backup space requirement, so it is considered a parking spot as drawn, correct? All right.
I'd go by your word.
Yes.
When we, when we go to write the public notice, we'll verify that it does work.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
So...
So...
Yeah, do we need to vote on that, or how does it work when we recommend them to the ZBA? I forgot on...
I think you need a motion.
Motion, okay, should I, do I have a motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, and we'll see you after the zoning board.
Do we want to set a public hearing?
Schedule a public hearing soon pending the ZBA approval.
Pending ZBA approval.
I guess I just want to say one last thing. If, you, you know, if it's a bedroom, it's a bedroom. We would, we would just, I, I know you understand, I just, what that...
I was gonna say, don't shy away from it being a bedroom, we're not here to say...
Yeah, because you never know what...
Better to...
And, and we would much rather, as a village, have a space that's designed with safety in mind, you know? And...
Understood.
Yeah, that it's not an enforcement issue later. We'd rather it just be what it is, so that's for you to consider and...
Make sure of that.
Yeah, you never know what's gonna happen, so, thank you.
I think, I mean, it's worth just thinking out loud. It's, it could be worth asking for that variance that would be required if they were bedrooms. If they don't want to grant it to you, then you could take it away and, you know.
Correct.
Do we have a motion to set a public hearing pending ZBA approval?
So moved.
A second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you, have a good night.
Next on the agenda is gonna be...
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is gonna be Edgeon Hudson Riverfront Development Block OP and N Townhomes, phase two.
So again, chair members of the board. Nice to see you again. Before I get into sort of the itemized changes to the re-submitted drawings, I wanted to speak directly to one of the questions I was asked at the last meeting, which is what, what's the composition of the overall run long hauls pass going to look like? And actually, it was a really great exercise. I used to call it figure ground drawing when it was from above. It was really kind of like that, where, you know, we just wanted to say, okay, well, these, these large sort of white veranda elements that we're showing on the first building, my approach was to say, you know, look, we're gonna, we've composed the first building and we'll develop it as we go along. But, you know, understandably, the question was asked, well, can we get some sense of what it, that it looks like, you know, over the entire stretch of it? So above is the actual perspective of the, because the road curves. And then below, I just lined them all up in a row, so you could just read it a little more cleanly. And actually, it was a really great exercise. I, I feel like the, um, the building and all the buildings that count improved a lot by this exercise, actually. And, you know, what I kind of came to is the white elements, I toned them down, I reduced them, and then just go a little bit more of a spare rhythm along the full streetscape. A little less icing on the cake, I guess I'd say. So that's the first sort of significant change, is in the first building, which is the one on the far left, we saw that large corner element, which I, I like, it's got a nice strength to it as sort of a, to bookend certain situations. The other place that appears is where, um, a footpath comes through and then on the end on the right. So it sort of dances up and down. Took them out, uh, pretty much completely away from the interior units. And so, you know, it's, it's sort of, um, they're paired up in significant places along and, and anyway, I just thought it was a nice improvement. The other change is, top left is the last submission, and the larger one is the current one. So you see that we've got the larger element on the left and the stepped down one on the right. The, the challenge was having the same or similar floor plans inside, because we're selling these things, but, but burying it on the outside. So, um, so we developed sort of a more pure brick version of it on the less prominent elevations. We also now are jogging the buildings at every party wall, they weren't before. We're ve- we're alternating the brick at each party wall as well. And we, um, we varied the finistration, not just the patterns of them, but the shapes of the windows and also the molding patterns. So the ends have sort of a more pre-Asian-looking horizontal only. And the interiors now have, not previously, have the, the four light windows. So it's a, um, more vertically delineated. So again, the elevations, the, the variance in the, the molding patterns. And to speak to a comment I heard in the, uh, what do you call the six-thirty meeting? I always feel like I'm saying that someone else's restaurant table was sitting over there. But, um, I'm happy to do more photorealistic rendering of these. I, um, I'm just learning to do it myself, old dog, learning a new trick, uh, so I don't have to send it out. But happy to do some more photorealistic renderings of these. So really, those are, I mean, that's, that's a very basic presentation, but there's one other thing I'd like to, I'd like to point out or show, back and forth about... Back and forth about, about showing this one, the, the, the question of the three and four story. I just, what I did was I just did a pure massing of what it looks like if we do a three-story on the ends with just a vestibule ten percent floor above it over where the stair is. The massing exactly the same, jogging in the same places, et cetera. But showing what we're proposing as opposed to what the zoning suggests or what a pure three-story building would look like. So, this is our proposed massing on, in the foreground and, and what a pure three-story on the end would look like on the, in the background and then reversing it this way. So, I'm, I'm hap, I'm happy with this. I, I really do feel this tells the story of what it would look like sort of by the letter of it versus, versus what we're proposing. And then... I'm just doing this to leave a rendering. This is stock full of information responses to, to our review letters that I'm happy to answer anything on. Really, what I've just pointed out is what's changed from the last submission. And I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
So, I don't have any questions. I, you know, do feel that, I appreciate that you have toned back the, or toned down some of the wider elements. I think that does help it blend in some more. You know, I appreciate the articulation along the front of the building. I do think that adds a lot of interest and does give the, some of that variety that was maybe the original intent. And I'm comfortable moving this towards, you know, having, I guess, the board trustees to make the final call of the three-story, four-story interpretation.
Correct.
Do, do you feel satisfied with, I say, do you feel happier with this than what you came before us with before?
I do. It's, I've said that before, that, you know, it's a, it's a partnership dealing with the planning board. And it's your town, not mine. And, and everybody needs a client. And, you know, before we start selling houses, the planning board's my client, the Architect Review Board. And it did improve. And it has every time I've come here, so I do appreciate it.
Good.
And I like it, I, I really do. I, I, I just want to get started.
Yeah, no, we, we appreciate that and we appreciate the, the care and attention you give to it. And I appreciate those studies and comparisons massing-wise and also the overall kind of...
Thanks.
...concept and the evolution of the articulation breakdown and, and breaking the symmetry within the block. So, I mean, I feel comfortable recommending to the board of trustees or saying we endorse this interpretation, but just to confirm that they agree would be our next step.
Thanks. So, in terms of process, how exactly is that going to work?
How to say, we, basically, it requests, I don't know if it happens in-house via Sean or with our consultant, to draft a memo to the board trustees. They'll discuss it at an upcoming meeting presumably. I don't know if they vote on it or how it works on their end. But then, once that happens, it will come back to us presumably, hopefully, by next month. And then, we don't need a public hearing, correct? It's just a resolution to approve it.
Correct.
So, we could at the same time request a draft resolution, be prepared so that if we hear back from the board trustees, we'll be ready.
Right, I can appreciate that.
So, do we need, do we have to request the preparation of that resolution in the meeting tonight? Or can that be...
Or that was what I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just ahead of myself, but yeah, that was...
Sorry. Maybe I should pay attention more.
Do you agree?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I was going to say, is there any other comments from board members before we proceed on?
And then Sean, is this something where, where Bill would need to come to the trustees' meeting to present this? Is that typically what you would expect?
Yes.
I'd be happy to. I prefer that too.
Yeah, and you can show them what you've shown us.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to, thanks.
We'll have to schedule for their next, their next available work session.
Right.
That works, okay.
Yeah.
They typically meet on Tuesdays.
Great, thanks. But we're mobilizing and hopefully, we'll be driving piles in June. We have a foundation for our first building now, appreciate that. And we're all super excited. This is, I've told Peter, this is for the nicest townhouse site in North America. I really do believe that. It's a privilege to be building on it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys going to cash that check soon?
Yeah, I know.
Already had.
Need someone to endorse the back of that.
Probably should wait till the...
Yeah, I'm sorry, we have to tell us.
Let's, let's, yeah, discuss, ask you questions when you...
Okay, so just, sorry. So, just for, for this process with the village trustees, so they're going to go to a work session, then they're going to need to officially vote on it in a, or could they vote on it in a work session?
It's, yeah, they could, but it's not necessarily, what's happened in the past is, it hasn't been necessarily a formal vote. The village board will say, yes, we're in agreement with...
Okay.
It's just, they just have to provide guidance back to the planning board. And it's, the, the language allows for that latitude. You don't have to have a formal vote.
Okay.
Just provide, have a discussion and it's in public. And the village board says, no, we're, we're in agreement that, yes, that we're, we're okay with the application being changed with that modification of the Riverfront Development Concept Plan going from three to four to all fours. In the, the way it's been presented to the village board.
And then, does the special permit have to be amended?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, okay. Is that just noted in the resolution or something?
Yeah, the, the Riverfront Development Concept Plan is, is a companion piece to the special permit, but it doesn't necessarily affect the special permit.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Next, we have One Kelborn Avenue, Proposed Edition Alterations Plenary Presentation. Welcome.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Thank you for during this meeting.
You guys are doing quite important work.
My name is Nile Kane, the architect for the owners, Benay Upta and Benina Shitt. And this is a sort of complete redo of a house at One Kelborn Avenue. This is the existing house. I'll just run through the neighborhood. You're probably aware of where it is. This is right on Broadway, the first house you come to on Kelborn on the north side of the street. Just looking at it from the back, looking southward, southeastward, I guess. Looking southwestward from the backyard. This is the adjacent property to the west on Kelborn. And just want to point out also the, this, you know, currently, there's an asphalt driveway right up against this adjacent property. And, and the, the house is now oriented so that the entrance is to the west and not to the street. So, we're proposing to change that, that orientation. Just, just, you know, this area again, but this is just looking up towards the cemetery. It's right across the street from the cemetery. This is looking around the side. There's a old sort of worn-out picket fence, not a picket fence, stockade fence. And again, that's just looking at Broadway. This is the house across the street. Looking again, up to the, to the east. Straight down Kelborn to the river and down Broadway to the south and down Broadway to the, up Broadway. So, again, this is the existing house. You can see the entrance is off this asphalt driveway. And the side of the, what, you know, is perceived as the side of the house is facing the front of the front property. And this is how we imagine transforming the house. The house is currently non-conforming, so that the front of the house here is twenty-one foot eight back from the property line. We're keeping this plane, this is the plane of the existing house. We are, as you can see, adding a third floor, third sort of half-story. So, that we are requesting a variance for that extra height within the setback area. We're requesting a variance for the, this front portico, which we've kept to a minimum projecting this out, this little vestibular area about two feet eight inches. And then, there's the roof of the portico and the stairs that require a variance as well. Concept here is really to open up the side of the house to the east. Get rid of that asphalt paving, put in some really nice planting. We have raised planting beds that are surrounded by Corten steel as sort of a concept for that, that sort of area, kind of creating a courtyard with planting is the sort of concept there. This is, the material we're using is an interesting material. But it's, they sent me this huge sample, so I had to carry this whole thing in. But it's a rain screen technology. This is actually a bamboo product. And it's used quite widely in, in Europe and even, you know, sort of institutional and commercial buildings because of its durability. It's more durable than EPE. You're probably aware of the hardness of EPE. This is actually even harder. So, the, the cloud, house will be clad in this product. And we, we sort of conceived of this kind of pergola-type elements in the front and the back of the house that kind of extend the house out, kind of like, almost like an accordion, a pleated sort of look, which I think will be quite, quite interesting. And this being the south side will have an interesting effect with the sun coming through it. This next rendering is maybe showing the concept of having some soft planting in front. And of course, it obscures the view of the building, so we did both versions just for the sake of seeing the, the architecture. This one's actually more accurate in terms of the planting and the big tree, existing trees and so forth. This is the back of the house, again, some nice planting. We have a covered car port structure to the east that we're proposing. And again, this is the back of the house. So, this, this portion is an existing, I mean, an addition, a two-story addition on the back of the house. And actually requires a variance if I'm not mistaken, because any addition to a non-conforming house requires a variance, so that's another, another variance request. The metal is going to be zinc, sort of a gray zinc, which I have photographs of the products for the presentation. I heard you discussing the driveway when we first entered the, the room. We are doing this wraparound driveway. It is going to be a nice pergius brick paving. And we are keeping the existing curb cut. And we wouldn't want to move it any closer to Broadway. It would just be more dangerous the way people come around that curb. So, and you'll see on the site plan I've added, which is now when you're drawing, some analysis of the, of the radiuses of the car turning and so forth. And, and it works. That's why it kind of bows out like that in order to get a nice radius and be able to confront the street head-on and on an angle. So, it'll be the same as far as any safety concerns that it currently is. And of course, driveways, still used, just the nature of the occupancy. It's the existing site plan. Again, this is the existing house, so this footprint remains. We're reusing the foundation, some of the framing. It's, as you can see, a very extensive alteration of the existing house, sort of a, a new house. This is the addition in the back and then just, just a little portico to the front here. And of course, the, the, you know, the next, the covered parking here, which is within the proper setback, setback requirements. Again, this is a brick paving, aqua brick it's called. And it's, and it's actually accepts five hundred inches per hour, according to the data, which frankly, I find hard to believe, but that's what the data says. And this is just a little knuckle here to, to allow for a K-turn. And that's going to be a grass-type paper, to just really make it very soft into the landscape. We are cutting down three trees, six and eight inches. And does that require a separate tree permit for six and eight inches? The planning board doesn't, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. And then, so replacement trees, of course, replacement trees. And then, which will be fir trees to try to, you know, create, you know, this buffer, to, to increase the buffer to Broadway. The other variance I should mention is that there's that, the, the picket fence that I showed you, that is actually sometimes outside of the property line and sometimes into the property lines. So, we want to take that out and put in a new stockade fence sort of where it belongs. And that does require a variance, as, as you are aware. We are taking down the stockade fence along here. And there's a portion of it here we're taking down as well. We're going to replace the stockade fence here with some, some planting hedge along there. And you'll see, I have the plants actually in for the presentation. Yeah, this just outlines the variances and I think I've, I've gotten them all. Oh, this is, this is the stormwater management plan. There were some comments from the engineer, which are very straightforward, just in terms of some of the numbers I used. And we still have to do a perk test anyway. So, this is based on a assumption of the observation and soil types. So, it's probably pretty accurate, but there's some tweaking. Existing floor plans, basement storage floor plans, not basement, cellar really, and sort of have a mechanical vault there. We're probably going to do air-sourced heat pumps and looking into possibly doing internal geothermal. But we will determine that a bit later. Site plan, again, the, the idea here is these raised planters, there's raised planters with some tall planting here, tall planting here. And these actually are going to be sort of annuals and vegetables and that sort of thing just for, for Vinny's mother, is that right? Vinny's mother. Yeah, and this is the, the plan, pretty straightforward. We are actually extending the second floor out from where it is now here to cantilever. It's sort of in the same fashion it's doing on this side. These are going to be, if we have little heat pumps, they'll be located on this pad, sort of hiding behind the screens here. Second floor, third floor, all be fully sprinkler, of course. Yeah, particularly to point out on these plans, they're pretty clear. Lighting plan, we're going to have some nice soft lighting in the ground just, just sort of, it spreads out at cuts of the lighting further on the presentation. So, it'll all be soft planting. You probably have a code restriction against off-lighting to adjacent properties. I don't know if that is on hand, but it will comply with that, that. This is the covered parking structure. And there's a little covered walkway, sort of pieces of covered canopies that, that connect the carport to the house. Elevations, the idea is to have just huge, huge, huge sliding doors to really open it up to the, to the garden, to the west. Section, again, sort of speaks for itself. We are, we're going to have sort of internal gutters that kind of just disappear into the, into the structure. And the gutters are hidden, the downspouts are going to be hidden within that pergola lattice-type structure, so you won't see it with the gray metal as well. Same. Yeah, there are various elements, screened wood elements that screen this little raised porch in the front that, that sort of speak to the pergola element, it's just tighter, tighter rhythm of wood. That's the zinc, the middle one, although there's a little reflection there, so it's a little brighter than it would be. And I had a sample, which I couldn't find, it disappeared. A dog ate it. Weather shield windows, black aluminum. This is not the building, this is just, shows windows. Some lighting, again, just soft up and down lighting that will be on the posts at the covered parking structure. Lighting, soft lighting, just to get some nice lighting and planting. Whoops, is that, no, oh, it's the, uh, the, uh, pergius paving. And again, we did, the engineer asked us to do calculations of this, the gravel bed under there, which we've done to show that it will accept actually far more than it needs to. That's the spec sheet, if anyone's interested in that. That's with the engineer, it's review. This is the grass pave, uh, that's not the right name, but that's what it is for the, for the sort of turnaround zone, just to make it really soft into the, into the existing landscaping. This example of another project I did with these Corten, um, planters, and that's kind of, kind of akin also aside to the idea of those paving, it's well underground bed. And we will have number ones instead of three forty. I don't know if you need to see this particularly, but skip laurel, so we're looking at skip laurel along that back. And we're taking down the fence and some portions in the front. Some little, maybe little brown ducks with hedges, we're just, we're going to have a little walk-through next week and kind of try to finalize the landscaping. Some flame grass, which will be on that sort of raised porch planter, uh, should be very nice. Variegated grass in various locations, you saw the rendering. This lariolli, which is beautiful, it's going to sort of be within the taller grass. Ground myrtle for the, getting very detailed here, myrtle for ground cover. And maybe some of these tall, nice, um, it's called pencil holly, which may be on the west side. Again, to create kind of a nice sort of garden, courtyard in the front. And that's the, that's the black bamboo. And I know we are proposing to, which I'd like to do in the front, putting it in a contained raised platform, so there should be, you know, um, root barriers all around it. I know technically it's invasive, but it will be in a planter nut in somewhere where it can invade, um, the landscaping. And then, oh, just fir tree, fir trees, won't be that big initially. And nice little ornamental tree at the corner, the southwest corner, which this is a huge example of, but a sort of a, this is a weeping cherry, of course. Oh, the stockade fence. And that's about the, that's about it. Sorry, I was going back to that.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions at this point?
Guess there, uh, maybe one question might be, uh, if we're looking at native species when you're looking at your landscaping plan.
Yeah, well, it's just the, the bamboo, I think. The other ones are, are native, but bamboo is, I know bamboo isn't, but I don't know if there's a method because it's raised, it's just such a nice loose, well, just like this, sort of suggests would be lovely, but I don't know if there's a way to get a reading on that, whether it's okay if it's fully contained and raised or not. You would decide that?
Good question. We do, I guess.
You would decide.
I mean, just jumping ahead, but you know, in my personal opinion, maybe you know a lot about bamboo, and I do, keeping it in and in some type of container is definitely the best.
Yeah, it has to be. If you don't have a rise zone barrier, it's a nightmare. I've made that mistake myself.
This board has been very clear with past applicants that they really want applicants to look at native planting, native species.
Yeah, well, I, I, that's why I'm bringing it up, because it is a na- it is one exception, and because it's raised and fully contained, it would seem otherwise, there's no point in, my mind, in disallowing it because it can't invade. It can't be invasive.
Until it does.
Well, no.
Yes, don't, listen, don't, all right, you want to get, you want to get started for the discussion about landscaping, if we can, we, we'll go through that.
Well, we can if you want to, put it in a nice way.
How long do you want to wait?
Wait for what?
How long do you want to wait?
What do you mean?
Very clear, I think this gentleman got the, uh...
I did, I, I, I read, and that's why I brought it up in that context.
Right, and I'm, I'm telling you now, I'm telling you now, that this village, this planning board has been very specific with other applicants that not, that invasive species is not acceptable as part of a landscape plan. Okay?
Okay, well, that's, that's why I was asking, that's why I was asking them to opine on it.
Right.
I didn't need an answer quite phrased that way, frankly, but yes.
So, so just to, I mean, yeah, just to kind of re, re, uh, I don't know, get, get reoriented here. So obviously, you got to go before the zoning boards. So, and, and it's basically seems like it's just, you know, it's, it's setback-type variance things. So, to kind of just get into this, so I think, so let's talk a little about the driveway, just, and, and the only reason, only reason bringing it up is, is I think, one of the, one of the big questions that's going to come up in, for the, for the variance is, the house is already quite close to the front yard setback already. And then, then you're coming, you know, further, further out, and I, and, um, and of course, there's reasons for everything, and, and I, I mean, I think the project looks great. Like, everything looks well thought out, I mean, all those things are great. I just think, obviously, that process is going to be about, well, you know, have you looked at other, I mean, has there been alternative analysis about, hey, can this entryway be, you know, wherever? Because, I mean...
Anywhere along that arc is, is really problematic. It's, at worst, you know, in, in terms of sightlines, in terms of, um, visibility, in terms of safety for the tenant, uh, the tenants, the occupants. It, it, we're keeping same curb cut, which I think is the plus. And I think the benefit just outweighs, and it's going to be a beautiful paving, and it's not going to be asphalt, you know, so, and we're putting some planting in front of it, which wasn't maybe shown in the, in the, in the rendering, but we're going to have screening in front of it. I, I think it works. I mean, I think it works very nicely, the benefit and the benefit to the neighbor too, and by the way, we get letters of support from all the neighbors, but the adjacent neighbors. Just outweighs, you know, if you had, the, point my finger, you know, this is, this is the asphalt paving right up against the adjacent property. I think this is just much nicer, pulls it back into an area that is really effectively screening. It's maybe a little issue here, but why, why is it that much of an issue? You know, it's just, there's, there's sort of the project, houses with driveways, you know, circular driveways in front of the house, that's a common thing.
Sure.
And granted, it's tight, I think, sorry.
So, so I guess the, the question is, clearly, the, the turning movements are kind of affected by that bump out, but I think from a, as, a variance perspective, uh, you're, you're showing coming, you know, you already have a non-conforming situation. That's, that's probably almost like an exceptional non-conforming. Like, if you looked at even the setbacks of homes that are, that are non-conforming now, they're, you know, you're at twenty feet, right? So, um, so I'm just, only just, this is just pure, purely like a, a question that I think will come up with, with the, uh, the zoning board.
Exactly, I know, I, exactly.
Has, has, you know, that, that entrance looked, I mean, was it considered to, you know, rotate that to the, to the east or to the west?
I mean, I wouldn't want to enter on the Broadway directly, I wouldn't want to enter anywhere along the curve. That's the furthest west point for the logical curb cut. We're not changing anything in terms of any curb cut safety issue, because it's existing. Anything, we take down a, I mean, actually, it's, the visibility is, is fine there, but we can improve the visibility with new landscaping. So, yeah, I mean, and I think the, again, the plus of that whole notion of getting the weird driveway, the entrance of the house on that side, and just, obviously, kind of more different lot, you know, we do it differently, but I think this, I think it's, I think it works out very nicely, right?
So, so it was never contemplated to have, for example, so you have the, the little walkway that comes up there, and then it, it essentially, it's... Yes, that one there, there was never contemplating having your entry on the west side, essentially in, in part of the area that's this, this patio porch area?
Will it?
Because, I mean, that, that's, I mean, that's the variance you're asking for.
Oh, that's a variance, whereas, we're still talking about the driveway.
No, no, I, I think it's all related, of course, but I, but I think when you're, you know, when you're talking about like...
Yeah, no, I think...
Sorry, Nadia, is that right? Can you just clarify that that's where the entrance is currently on the west side?
Sure. Yeah, yeah.
So obviously, we have, we did contemplate, should we keep it? But we thought this was better. And the reason, but all the reasons that Nadia said, but also, I think, maybe it's so obvious Nadia didn't mention it, but it's, it's actually much nicer in the neighborhood to have the front of the house facing the road, right? It's, it's quite like, either hostilely, uh, when, to drive past this like side of the house.
Can you just actually come to the microphone and then state your name?
Oh, sorry.
So, the, the benefit of moving the entrance to the front is that there is now an entrance, an entrance on the front. It feels nicer in the street.
True.
And it, then it's nicer, we think it would be nicer to occupy the house, because the house is, is not so, so fun on the roadside, because we hear these big lorries. The house is more fun on this side, which is why we wanted to spend some time on this side and not on asphalt, always, because we have a toddler. So, yeah, and an eighty-year-old who likes to garden. So I wanted to create this patio for, for them, really to, to spend time outside without having to hear the lorries and to make the front of the house appear more charming. So, yeah, for sure, we, we like, yeah, we considered it, because that's where the entrance is now.
Because I, I mean, the, the board's going to ask, right?
Right.
Because, I mean, that's kind of the, the nature of it, so that was just, it was more of a, hey, just, you know, you might want to be prepared with a question like that.
It was like, in great part, the impetus of the project, because the house feels like it was like this kit house that was plumped on like really weird position in a lot like forty years ago.
That big backyard, who knows why they put it there?
It, it's, it's, I think possibly it actually was entered into via...
Oh, the other way.
Because there's still some gravel here that indicates that might have been an entrance. So it's just, it's all convoluted in its entrance, so we're trying to like, un, un, fuck it, basically. And make it, make it make sense in its, in its environment.
I applaud the design effort and everything guys are doing. I think it's, um, it's a much improvement on the building. I guess the question is, you know, are you really using the foundations of the building?
Yeah.
And is that, is it, is that a cost decision, or is it just because it's easiest, or, like, you could theoretically just have pushed it back, you know, a few feet, I think is what he's kind of asking.
I mean, we are using all the existing, that, you know, it is the second, the two floors that we're building, the core of the building is the existing, you know, footprint of the...
We also have, I mean, we have two beautiful oak trees.
Sorry, sorry.
Use the pointer.
I guess, we just, only because this is recorded and people watch it.
Did you use the mouse?
Use the mouse. And also, and also, please just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Vinay, I'm one of the owners of the property.
I, I'm Vanina.
Nice to meet you.
So, yeah, we're, we're using, to answer your question directly, we're decided to use existing foundation, because, um, what we're able to come up with, uh, what we think is a, a very feasible design on it. Also, there's two beautiful oak trees.
Here and here.
Where Vanina's pointing with the mouse, um, which we wouldn't want to cut down, obviously.
So if we wanted to move the house back, we would have had to, at very least, cut this one down.
Yeah.
Possibly this one, yes. And they really make the environment, like, the sense of places, what was, was the impetus of the project, because this house just plumped on a lot that doesn't make any sense, is, doesn't feel, uh, yeah, doesn't, doesn't feel right. Tried to, tried to design something that felt like it made sense in the space.
I really don't think that variance is that much of an issue, I just think it's fine. And it's a beautiful, nice-looking driveway, nice planting around it. And it functions in terms of...
What do you think, what do you think that we should say to the EPA if they are required about that?
You want to come and help us?
I know, I, I mean, I, I...
This sounds like you're like giving a flag that they're going to ask this question.
No, I, I, I think, yeah, no, no, just, I think, um, you know, we just want to be super respectful and productive with your guys' time, you know? I would want to make sure you're getting through the process, and I think, um, you know, I think the purpose of really this meeting is, is to kind of, kind of beat up the design, not beat it up, but like, but just ask the questions, kind of, kind of probe a little bit, right? To say, hey, like, can you think about this and that? And, and like you said, I mean, this is a, I mean, from my perspective, like, a very well-thought-out design, but I think the point is, is that, you know, it's kind of like, there's all, the, the point is, there's always a reason why someone does something and wants a variance. The question is, is it legitimate, right? Is it, like, is it...
Is there other ways of doing it, anything through this many times? And, and I thank you too, because you're exactly right. This is the main issue of the project, the fact that it's close to the, to the street, and we're wrapping, we're reconfiguring the driveway is clearly, they're going to...
I think the main reason we're asking for this variance for the setback is because we want the front of the house to be on the, in the front.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that's reason A, and reason B is that the beautiful ability to, to reinvent the west side of the house in this fashion, and open it up to the west side, which is the nicest, the quietest, the, you know, the reviews as you get higher up, of course, and the views down as well as to the river, so it, it all makes a lot of design sense in my opinion.
Yeah, all, all of these corner, it's interesting, I, I mean, all, all these projects that come, you know, like drive by them or whatever, and like, I just never, all of these corner lots are, are, they're very challenging, there's a lot of like variabilities. I mean, there are still some that, that actually have access on Broadway. There's one, I think, between Farrington and Harwood. So, you know, I don't think, you know, I think this is not necessarily a novel challenge, I, I think, with some of these, some of these lots, but, um, I don't know, just something, something to consider, I mean, contextually with the neighborhood and like what's been done. These are challenging, like, lots, and there's been, yeah, a lot of interesting things been done.
Really, no, but yes, we can go through all the logic of keeping cover cover is absolutely the precision, and I think, yeah, nothing to read, I might end up saying the same thing over again, but I think, I think we're, we're okay. I mean, I think we have a strong argument, in my opinion.
I think I would just say, like, we, I mentioned in the work session, from my own experience on my own street in the neighborhood, it's really difficult having that entrance to the driveway close to nine. It's really hard when you're trying to slow down to pull onto the road and then also get into your driveway, and if you have kids, it's difficult. It's nice to have a little bit of a breather to move it further, uh, west.
Which we can't do. I guess it's right on the edge, but yeah.
Just move it a little bit.
That, that line is not the property line, by the way, that far, far to the left line, as you, you're aware, so it's right on the...
Yeah, what, what is that? Is that right or what?
I don't know, I think that's just the surveyor...
It's a paper street.
It's a what?
This is just a paper street.
It's a paper street, yeah.
Or, or, we have one little Phillips there, it's a paper street, yeah, I'm sorry.
So who owns it?
It was planned and then, yeah, it was planned in the neighborhood.
Interesting.
Well, I, uh, thank you for the, the consideration you've put into your design so far. I especially appreciate the, um, the permeable pavement. I would like to underscore Mr. Smith's comments about, uh, native landscaping and stress that it is, it is important to this board that you use plantings from, specifically from, uh, the lists that were provided. Our village and Westchester at large is just struggling with plants that have their own way, and it, and it's very difficult in our public spaces, in our, you know, um, rivers, et cetera, our public spaces, it's, it's, it's so, these plants get away, so, um, we are asking for, uh, you know, to, to pull from the lists that have been provided.
We're, we're fine with that.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you, okay.
And thanks for draw, drawing our attention to like the big picture consideration.
Thank you.
I think we had discussed it as a potential issue, but because it was contained, we thought, no, it's fine, but I understand that, you know, actually, we need to be owing on the side portion.
Well, and, and at large, I think that there's been a, a tradition of, we're just trying to switch the culture from, um, sort of, not, for a long time, there's been a tradition of non-natives being planted as the default, and as we switch to natives being the default, you know, we understand that people have favorite plants from where they come from, or, you know, we know that sometimes these things get brought in later, but it's, it is trying to shift to having the default be beneficial to the law at large.
Certainly where they're planted in the yard, I mean, or any open area, there's like, no, no debate about that, that's just the...
One other, one other question in this, uh, uh, is this all-electric mechanical? Like, hot water, cooking, induction, like, the whole deal? Or, or is there going to be gas?
Well, we thought, we had, we had the discussion about the induction cooktop, which everybody likes and which everyone resists, but once people... everybody likes and which everyone resists, but once people use it, they like it, and air-cooled, air, air-sourced heat pumps, probably, unless we do the geothermal, so yes, electric, which is a big push.
And again, it's, it's something that, from the board's perspective, I think, we strongly encourage that, just from a sustainability perspective, just that it's, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I have a, a gas range that I love, but...
I've had the cooktop discussion in the past two years, you know, I could catch into that discussion, but yeah, no, we're all switching to electric, absolutely. I'm going to get in my electric car after this meeting and drive home.
Do you want to make your comments, Jane?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm the engineer that you're referring to.
You are, okay.
I just had a couple of questions, can you speak a little bit about the grading that's proposed, on the lot, specifically two areas, one along the western property line, and then the driveway?
Well, you know what, well, this works, this works out, it is eight percent, not degrees, eight degrees right in here, otherwise, it's all under five, up to here. That's what I was thinking, no, it's eight percent, right?
That's better.
Eight percent, that's eight degrees, eight percent, yeah, it's eight percent.
Right, because it was written percent.
Right in there, yeah, it's eight percent, and then, and then this is less than five, and this is less than five here.
I understand, so is then, are you proposing to degrade that area, are there going to be changes in grade?
No, no, this is, I did check, I mean, we did, there are new grade lines, maybe they're not heavy, but there are some new grade lines, so we're changing it, somewhat, I mean, not a lot, because you can really change it that way, and then, and then this slopes down three, four feet or something here.
Back towards the house.
Towards the house, and then, and then, of course, this slopes away, and it's all drained properly, and, and actually, this is the, whoops, whoops, I swear I have the, anyway.
If you could, could you show us, propose grade lines a little bit cuttier, and make them stay down a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, sure, and, and, I know this was confusing, because I showed one detail through this wall that suggested that it's all retaining wall all the way along here, and it's not, it's retaining wall here, and then it turns into just wall, because the grade is equal on both sides, more or less.
But there's an existing retaining wall there now, is there a concrete?
There's an existing concrete block wall from here to here, and there's no wall after that point, I think that's about it.
And that concrete would stay, or is that going to be switched out with the new rubble?
Yeah, yeah, it's a kind of a message, see, I'm a block wall, so we're taking that out, putting a stone wall in, and then that's just the stormwater management here.
And would just, as you, I'm sorry, before you jump onto the stormwater management, as you look at that wall and design that wall and the drainage board, just be conscious of, when weep holes or drainage coming from that property to the west, we want to keep that on your side.
Right, we'll have the gravel and perforated pipe in it and so forth, and then it starts to...
And rattle to, you know, somewhere where you can handle it on site.
Come to air where the grade evens out with the, on either side of the wall. I don't know, though, you know, I've done, I've done walls like this, where you just, it's perforated pipe, of course, so it just allows the water to migrate more evenly into the stone.
Back to the face of the wall, back to there, right?
Yeah, so, so I don't think bringing it to air is...
If you could bring it to the...
I would not do that, actually, I, I would only do it because I think everyone wants you to do that, but that's...
You could potentially, I mean, do a, a perpulation test, though, you could put, you know, just a, a drywall.
We're going to get that done in the next couple of weeks, and probably tweet to this, but I did check the New York State, I think I had nine inches for a hundred year storm, and that data showed nine point one six inches per hundred year storm, so, yeah, so, it's like, slight minor, minor difference.
The other thing is, and, and I know you showed the specs for the payers, do they have a restriction on the maximum slope that you can install them on, and still get the process?
I was, yeah, I heard you, I mean, I, I heard you when you said that, and I was going to actually ask them about that, because it's a particularly wide opening, allows quite a bit, it's called aqua brick, so I'm going to investigate that a little bit.
There was, in case it doesn't work, and when you look at it, and in case it doesn't support that, there was another property in the matter that had something similar, it was greater than five percent, and what they did was, and I don't want to get into the weed here, but it was like, kind of a tiered, not a tiered, but like, a stepped gravel base, so that things would work in, and equalization perforated pipes, to kind of bring water to the flat areas.
So, maybe where it starts to get flat, you could do a deeper bed, is that what you're saying, probably?
Yeah, like, if you've got a section, slow foot speed.
Because honestly, we want to use it, regardless of whether it's functioning as well as it does flat or sloped, we're going to use it everywhere.
I love the use of Boris Dana, I just want to give it the best chance to...
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good suggestion, I appreciate that.
Any other?
I mean, those are the big things, and then, you know, little details that...
We have to get the first test on, and then finalize some of this, so...
Do you have any questions about any, anything that you'd like?
Yeah, I appreciate that, because I might have, oh, yeah, just about the, the calculation with and without the, what is it called, when you're, the, developed versus not undeveloped, because I've always done, we've always done it that way.
For something like this, and, you know, if, if it was just in addition, you know, maybe we could look at it that way, this is, I mean, this is another...
We want to do, sort of, water for everything, not just assume, I don't even know, you know, never really knew, probably not functioning currently. Yeah, it just means putting more tanks on the side. I actually did a calculation both ways, so.
Oh, great, okay.
I mean, with the tanks, different type of tank, it's a little bigger, it's easy. Yeah, so, that's, all that was sorted out, it's not worth discussing more here, I think.
Any other comments or questions? Yeah, you're going.
One more thing, because you did mention that, you're showing the cars there, it looks like you're showing the turning movements, at least from the backup from the carport, I can't really tell, this wasn't in the application package?
No, I, I, I thought I'd mentioned that we added some of that, you know, based on your comments, actually, just to analyze, I mean, I looked at the, sorry, the turning radius of the cars.
Yeah, I could see you have the carport, and then the turn coming out to the street, before you make the formal submission, maybe also add the car out of the driveway and making a turn, because that's two-way, right, that, that shoot that goes up to Broadway?
Yeah, I guess because it's existing condition, we're not going to, but, yeah, of course, the cars go this way, right?
Can I just add that, so technically, it's two-way in, up to Broadway, but nobody goes up this way, and so, I think, some people take, because it goes, there's an island, so some people will go right at the island in order to go...
And then make the left to go on.
Yeah, but nobody goes up here, up here to, to go that way.
Or to go that way, you mean, I mean, to go north, they never go south that way.
Or even to go this way, it's like, because it's tiny, it's like, just impractical, and it's supposed to be, like, by a few directions, but there's only enough for, like, one and a half cars, it's like, super dangerous, everybody avoids it.
And just, just to be clear, there is a stop sign, so it is two-way.
Yeah, it is technically two ways.
But it's, it's dangerous, and we, we actually, we've lived here for how many years, we never go north in that way, like, for us to go north, we'll go south, sorry, west, south, airborne, go on Bellwood, and then make the left, yeah, well, either the light, or we travel north on Bellwood, and then make the left Broadway into the entrance to Phillips Mall.
And all our, all our neighbors at the top of the street do the same, we just kind of ignore that, so weird.
Intersections are a little wonky.
Yeah, so...
Well, I appreciate your submission, the thoroughness of it, the refinement of design, and the considerations you've done are clearly improvements to what's existing. And I, I'm just thinking, is it procedurally appropriate to be, do we feel ready to recommend them to go to zoning, knowing that that's a step that they're going to have to take? And, or is there any reason not to?
Well, we have to...
It seems to make sense to me to go ahead and send them to zoning.
Yeah.
And will we get same time set a public hearing, pending the ZBA approval?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion for both those things?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, these are subsequent days, right, aren't they?
Yeah, what's going to happen is, unfortunately, the way it's set up, I don't think you can make it in time for the next month's ZBA, because of their submission deadline, am I correct, or am I...
We talked about doing that, I mean, we have it in already, actually.
Oh, if you have it already in, then that's a different...
We mixed up, we thought we were going to the ZBA first, and then realized we weren't, probably need some little edits.
Right, if, assuming the edits can get to us, I think the notice has to go in soon, right, next week?
I mean, we're not really, we're not editing anything.
Hold on a second, all right, when is the notice?
It has to go in by the end of June first, they can ask to mail that.
Oh, because we have, we have, we have a little more time this particular month, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, it's all because of the mailing.
Assuming we get the revised plans and the revised application, yes.
Okay.
It has to go right, because it has to go to the payment next week, holiday.
It's the notification.
It's the notification that creates this sensitive time thing, and luckily, in June, you're, we're having later meetings, so you, you've benefited from that, the time to slip in, because I, often, I feel like I have to explain to people why they're, it's probably not going to work until the next month, but in that case, yes, if you can get your revised...
The drawings aren't what they are, they're, you can submit them, but not do any design work, so that's easy.
Yep, if it, if it's in time, and you're before them in June, then we can see you on June twenty-second, correct.
For a public hearing.
For the hearing.
Great, wonderful, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And then, last but not least, we have, um, approval of minutes from April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and you had some edits and you revised them.
I revise them. I'm lazy, of course, I'm a mystery.
They're getting cloudy. Okay, sounds good, good night, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have to go get our babysitter.
Yes, good night.
So, I move to approve the minutes from April twentieth, twenty twenty-three.
Anybody second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and, so we need to vote to close out the meeting, this is the one thing I always forget. I don't need to, though.
Do a motion in a second.
Okay.
Just before you do this whole business.
Yes, okay, actually.
So, so, if you know, Lynn McCarthy was awarded a distinguished citizen planners award from the Westchester Municipal Plant Federation for his thirty-two years of service on the plant ward, is that right?
Yeah.
The Westchester Municipal Plant Federation has an annual dinner on May thirty-first, it's a Wednesday, at six o'clock, and it's at the, it's in the Urishell, one of the beach clubs.
I didn't realize who was getting awarded.
If anybody's interested in going, just reach out to Anthony Giacchio, and he's coordinating, coordinating the...
Okay, great, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, it's, I, listen, I think it's somebody who puts that much time and effort on behalf of his community should be recognized, so.
That's amazing. Thank you. Any other? With that, we're voting to close.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.